I'd like to call the Township Board of Commissioners, special meeting for Thursday, June 13th at 7:13 to order, roll call, Manager Silken.
Commissioner Harold, Commissioner Bertani.
Here.
Commissioner Blasko.
Here.
Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Casara.
Here.
Commissioner Higas.
Here. Could everyone please stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If any residents would like to speak tonight, they can sign a book at the podium. First resident is Bill Viola. Come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Viola. I live at 400 Daly Drive, North Huntington, Pennsylvania. Okay, thank you. I was here last month and I explained the concerns in which I had, and everybody seemed to be very receptive. But every day went on, nothing seemed really happy. People come out and measured and did different things and talked to me, but I've got nowhere. And every day I pull out of my driveway, it's like Russian roulette. And I don't understand why. I understand there's a lot of different things. The people that came down and explained some things to me yesterday, explained to me that there is a distance in which you travel, it's a sight distance, and how much distance you have. Now, I have bushes that are completely blocking my sight, which I can't see. Now, they're telling me that I had 112 feet and you need 210 feet or something, so I'm in that limit where I cannot see. What they're also missing, another point, is where Daly Drive goes straight down, Oakhurst comes out, which is completely blind. Now, they're telling me they're giving these ratios at a 25 mile an hour speed limit. And I'm here not to cause trouble or anything. I'm here because I need help. I desperately need help. Now, I did a little experiment on myself. I explained to Mr. Blasko, I got a radar gun out, and on Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, it's a Bushnell Model 5830A. I clocked 34 people. One person, one, was at the speed limit. One out of 34. Now, I realize you're never going to stop speeding, and I realize there's a lot of other things more important in this community that you need to work with your officers. But one person out of 34 passed. Now, I gave a lenience also. I don't know how much lenience you guys give, but I gave a six mile lenience. I had two that fell into that group. Two. Eight were over 40 miles an hour, three were over 45 miles an hour, one was over 50 miles an hour, zero was 60, one was clocked at 70 miles an hour. 70 miles an hour. The next day, I just ran another sample again. One passed the speed limit, but you'll be really glad to hear who it was. It was a North Huntington Township truck. 24 miles an hour. I had four at a six mile an hour plus, 10 over 35, 3 over 40, 2 over 45, 1 over 50. Now, they're giving me this 25 mile an hour, PennDOT ratio, and I had two people in that ratio. Makes absolutely no sense to me. Now, do you realize that this person traveling 70 miles an hour was a motorcycle, and my neighbor Bob was there to witness this? That's how long he traveled by what? 102 feet in one second. I can't imagine anybody having that time and reaction time. I have no chance whatsoever. If that distance... And then at Oakhurst, when I took my gun and turned uphill, if someone was coming out of Oakhurst, I missed him completely by the time I could turn around and shoot another picture. I am asking you to look me in the face and tell me if your grandchildren and your children like mine come out of there, you wouldn't be on this side of the podium also. It's just, we're playing Russian roulette day after day after day. And my concern is, these trees grow every day. With all the rain we have, it's a problem. I really am here because I need some type of help. I need some type of clearance, something other than hope that something will happen. Because sooner or later, it's going to happen. Everyone who's come there from your public works or whatever said, oh, this is really dangerous. Someone's going to get hit. Brian lives right across the street. He can verify how fast these people, Mr. Blasko, how fast do these people come up this road? It's a dangerous situation. I'm here because I need help. Thank you.
Thanks. Next resident is Shane. You can just come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shane Masquita. I live at 1419 Highland Place. And Commissioners, the reason I'm here today is to inquire about ordinance number 765, specifically poultry. For my district, it is the R2 district, and it is required that you must own 20 acres of land before you can own any poultry. And I was wondering if we could maybe get that down to possibly less than an acre. Because you see, in cities like Pittsburgh, Los Angeles, and major cities, they're changing their ordinance on chickens and allowing them on smaller parcels. And in the city of Pittsburgh, it is required that you must own at least 2,000 square feet of land in your backyard to own poultry. And that is not restricted to poultry. Also, you're allowed to own goats, geese, and of course, poultry also. I was just inquiring what your opinions on it would be.
Thank you. All right, response to citizens' input. Manager Silken, do you have anything to follow up maybe about the issue with sight line distance there?
Yes, as was so eloquently explained, this is a major issue that addressing it at the 25 mile an hour speed limit doesn't work. We actually had our engineer out there today to take some engineering sight distances. And what we're probably have to do is do a traffic study to find what is the 85th percentile of speed. That is what the nexus you use for developing your sight distances. So, once we have the 85 percentiles, you know, that'll give us the real average speed of what's out there. Then, we can do the revised sight distances and then take the official actions we need to clear the sight distances. Doing it at 25 isn't going to give us adequate sight distance at speeds, so we need to do that. And what I can guarantee is this is something we have been working on. There's no simple solution of taking a measuring stick and saying, boom, this is it. Now, we'll do the traffic study. We have the ability in-house to do that traffic study to get the 85th percentile of speed. Then, we can determine our sight distance off of that. So, it is something that is ongoing, and that's probably all I want to say about it at this time, because this may, you know, evolve into further legal issues.
Just come up to the podium if you've got one more question. It's usually not a give and take, but if you've got one quick question.
The last question I have is that, you know, I understand the sight, but the Oakhurst problem is no one seemed to be addressing. It's a blind spot completely when they pull out of Oakhurst. That is the main problem. I can't see them whatsoever. So, I'm looking up, and they're pulling out. I'm completely blind, so I'm pulling out, you know, in a different direction. So, thank you.
Jeff, how much, how long of a timeframe are you looking at to have that traffic study completed?
Next week.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get a couple days of data.
So, we have an idea?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And next resident was Shane with chickens or poultry in residential areas. I was on the board, I believe Tony was. We've been through this idea before, and at the time, it was the board's pleasure that we were kind of against backyard chickens in residential zones. I currently still am. That's just my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board's, you know, feelings are, but that's my current position on it.
I have to agree with you, Zach. I'm still against having chickens in my backyard.
I mean, I believe a resident not from the area called me recently about the issue and asked us, you know, what our policy was. And, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say maybe the 20 acres, you know, might be a bit excessive. I mean, I could see maybe if you had five or six acres. But most of residential zones, you'd be lucky to have an acre and more than that. I believe that was our opinion even back then, that we would be open to the idea. I think we even said at the time it was five or six acres of property. But that's where I currently stand.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming up to speak about this, but I think that opens a whole can of worms for the township with waste from the animals, noises, and other things. So, I don't think that's something that the average neighbor wants. I know there's a lot more trends of kind of your organic food product, but I think that's necessarily not benefiting your neighbors as well, though.
... is, you might be diligent in taking care of your chickens and the smell and cleaning and, you know, might have enough property to keep them off your property line. But I don't know that we can come up with an ordinance and fleece every, come up with any type of permit for chickens or, you know, if anybody has anything like that. But, you know, my problem would be as far as, you know, chickens bring rodents, rodents bring coyotes, you know. I have a little bit of a problem because of that.
Any other board comments? All right, thank you. Moving on, more session discussion topics. Manager Silken?
Okay, I have a few topics to discuss tonight. First being is our trash and recycling bid contract, the contract and the subsequent bid. As you know, our current contract ends at the end of this year. We do have an option to extend, but if you follow any of the news or reading the municipal reports, the recycling market has drastically changed within the last nine to 12 months, and as the foreign markets have dried up, and the market for domestic recyclable bowls has basically run it away. So, you know, in order to extend the contract, we would have to do some, so much rewriting to be able to fit into current recycling. That's not an option of the staff right now. So, currently, we do mandate any of the bid, our commercial and residential trash collection recycling. Because the market is changing so, it basically changes every day. You know, we're recommending as a staff that we only bid out mandatory residential recycling and trash collection and allow the commercials to negotiate with their own haulers. I think this would also allow a couple other contractors to come into the market that couldn't handle all the commercial, but could handle our residential waste and recycling. That being said, recycling is a very noble concept. I think whenever it was started, you know, 20 years ago, Act 101 was passed with curbside recycling. You know, it was environmental friendly. It was an approach to get as much out of the trash stream as we can. However, on the other side, recycling is a market. You know, it's a business. In order to collect it, process it, there has to be an end user. There has to be a seller. So, that being said, bidders are not bidding on the old, we'll take everything recycling, the glass, the paper, all the plastics, you know, the tin. They're being very selective because whenever they collect it, they have to have a market to sell it. So, this bid that we're proposing, and this is on some, taking a look at some of the contracts that have just been bid, that have got no bid letters because they wanted all these recyclings in, and some of the modifications from the South Hill cog that just released a contract, but they're modifying it as it goes. So, this new contract will not be able to collect glass in the single stream as well as plastics three through seven, because there's no market there. They won't be picked up, and chances are, we won't get any bids for that if we put that in. So, this contract is going to be a little bit different. And what we're trying to do, and I can guarantee, this is going to be sort of like a tiptoe through a mine's field as we get this contract bid, have the pre-bid meeting, and actually get it implemented, is to have the most safe contract and the language in the contract protect us the most we can from especially excess recycling fees. We're seeing now the contaminated recycling fee is coming out of everywhere. We've dealt with it with some unilateral impositions here that we're fighting with some of our commercials from our provider. But what the haulers are doing is that they see a recycling bin that has contamination, has plastic bags in it, has glass afterward, they don't pick it up, and then they charge to pick it up as an extra garbage pickup. So, what we're going to try to do is bid our contract with language that gives us the most protection, but knowing full well that, you know, as we are subject to the market, you know, there will probably have to be negotiations, and there's going to be education. And that's going to be our first part. We're rolling it out now, is educating people what can be put in the recycling bins, what can't be. And probably, if everybody could make one concerted effort going into this, don't put your recyclables in a plastic bag and then put them in the bin, because they automatically then become garbage. So, that's one issue. But what I wanted to just give the board, gave you a draft contract. We're still going to mark it up. Because of, you know, our contract ending in December, we want to get the bid out now so we can award it no later than September, and then, you know, have a quarter to roll and transition if we do have a new provider. So, I just want to let you know, there's going to be changes in recycling. There's going to be probably changes in cost. Commissioner Blasko and I attended a seminar earlier this week, and that's the one everybody knows. Costs are going up simply because the market's going up. There's no way to protect it, because even if we collected ourselves, we still have to sell it to a provider. So, costs are going to go up. We're prepared for that. What we're hoping to do is through writing good specs, negotiating with the bidders, is to have the less impactful cost for the next five-year contract.
Any questions?
Okay, the next item is just a little update on our Act 172. Whenever we, that is the real estate and earned income tax credits for volunteer fire and EMS personnel. When this ordinance was drafted, the state provided us a draft ordinance that basically all the municipalities took, you know, cut and paste at our name into it and drafted it. But the one issue was that we have an April 15 deadline, or April 1 deadline for turning in all the certified applications. Then, they have to go to the boards to be certified. So, what we found is, we were certifying for earned income tax credits after April 15, after they were to be due. And the way this was structured to work is that the eligible applicants were able to deduct that from their return. So, it wouldn't be us issuing 27 checks, 37 checks. You would just take that off the return. You'd get a refund through your tax process through the earned income tax providers. So, that is probably the main error that we've watched is, this is the fledgling year. We instituted it. We're kind of fumbling through the administration, and everybody's been very cooperative. So, what I'll be doing is submitting probably next month a revised ordinance to take our dates back a little bit to give us time to get this approved in the March meeting. And then I'll take it out to the fire chiefs and the EMS chiefs to say, look, this is what we're doing. We need to just be a little bit quicker in getting this done. And being it'll be the second year next year, we should have less pain in the implementation. And, you know, they're coming in slow. I think we certified probably about 45 to 50 people. I've got about five returns to give checks back. I've been waiting to do them in a batch, but I'm going to get them out in the next week or so. So, if people are waiting in there, once you pay your 2019 real estate taxes, you can submit the documentation. And the biggest thing is, we need proof of where you, that where you live is the property that you are submitting your return for. I had to throw a couple out because of that, because it has to be a primary residence. So, I just wanted to update the board on that issue.
Jeff, just a quick question. So, what about the people that don't procrastinate and do their taxes in January?
Well, you wouldn't be certified this year for the tax. You wouldn't have your certificate until after the April, would be after the April Commissioners' meeting. So, you wouldn't be able to, because in order to file, you have to give that certificate to the earned income tax provider. You have to give a photocopy of the certificate.
Right. So, you're looking to just do it as deduction with whenever they file their income tax, right?
Yes, yes. For the earned income tax credit. That's how it works. It comes off the, I mean, we could, the board wishes, we could issue those refunds, you know, by check. I mean, we could have the people file, give us a copy of their filed income tax, earned income tax.
Well, I mean, if somebody files prior to us approving it...
They can't, because you need a certificate. I issue, after I issue a certificate, and the earned income tax provider shouldn't issue that refund without that certificate.
Right, I understand that. But, so you're saying, but maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying. But if, say I file my taxes and have my taxes all done and completed for 2019, January of next year.
Okay.
It's done, over. Before we get the information and certify, you know, that you're eligible for a refund.
Then you have to file an amended return.
Ah, okay.
Because you have through, I think through November to get, for the fire chiefs to certify everybody. There's no, you know, because of the way it works. So, that, there's timelines.
Okay, all right. So, just as long as there's, because there are some people that actually do their taxes before April 15.
Any other questions on that?
Okay, the next one is on public works and parks bids. I put that as an agenda item last week in a panic mode, because we got two bids that came in severely over our engineered estimates. However, I'm glad to say that it balanced out with the third, the large bid we were waiting for. Everything balanced out. And what it is, is we have three drainage projects right now, and I put those memos at your places. Lawland Lane, Edgewood, and the Entry Road slide repair. And we had budgeted $294,000 for those projects. And the, they were over, the first two came in overbid, but as Entry Road just came in today, those three projects now taking our credits and deducting our ordinance are coming in $286,911. So, we've actually got them in under budget. So, when I wrote this, to put this on the agenda, this was to kind of shuffle some money around to see which projects we wanted to do and which ones we wanted to put off. But we were able to hit these three projects within our funding allotment. However, you know, Entry Road and Edgewood and Lawland Lane are still awaiting some residential easements. That basically makes these projects yea or nay. And we're working with the residents to get these easements in, but what I'm going to do is suggest that we bid these projects and accept the bids pending the receipt of the signed easements. We're not going to give the notice of receipt, because if the residents can't give us the easements, these projects can't go through. And these benefit the local residents, and we just, you know, we're just needing the easements before we put the pipes in the ground. As you see from many other places, you know, drainage work has been done in the past without easements, and, you know, nobody knows who owns the pipe. No, you can't come on my property. So, we're not going to do these projects without the easements. So, with that, you know, like I said, that was put on in panic. Everything worked out right. I've given you the bid specs and the tallies. So, that's going to come in, and I'll put those on for action at the next meeting. The second one is the Lions Park project, is where we budgeted out of the Parks Fund, which is the Fee and Lou Fund. It's a restricted account that only can be used in the certain parks with the money that's received from the Fee and Lou. The project we budgeted for in Lions out of our Parks Master Plan is a walking trail, which is probably the best amenity we can put in that park, because we have very limited parking, and it's also a drainage system. So, when it rains, it's wet. So, the park, trail around the perimeter is the best, right. $125,000 was our engineered estimate. Our apparent low bid came in $165,555. There was one alternated to replace the concrete trail to a modified binder trail that gave us a $22,000 credit that took the park project down to $143,555. Now, in the Lions Park Fee and Lou Fund, there's $167,725 in that account. What I'm asking the board to consider is bidding, accepting that bid at $143,565 and allocating $18,555 from the Lions Park Fund to that trail. We have no other capital projects for Fee and Lou coming for Lions Park for this year. So, that would give us the amenity. That would put us on track for our master plan, and that would give us a nice park project.
Jeff, are there any other options besides Lions Park to use these funds for? You said...
There are, this funding is for Lions Park only. The $167 is earmarked for Lions Park. We do have, in Oak Hollow Park, we have funds, which have about $86,000, which in this budget we have to put in another restroom facility. And then, there's some of the smaller parks, we have smaller budgets that are, you know, that we're probably going to wait till we get a little bit more funds in to go through. But this money can only be spent at Lions Park.
And if we don't spend it, we lose it?
Technically, yes. We are time limited in Fee and Lou that we have to turn it over into a project, or we have to return to the developer.
Yeah, I think one thing that the board commissioners has to look at, and Wayne brought this up a few weeks ago when we were talking about our master plan, I think we have to look at what direction we want to take our Parks and Recreation Program. Are we going to go towards that community-based park? Are we going towards some of our neighborhood parks? Not living very far off of Lions Park, I see very minimal use of it. And not that I want to see money go away, but this is also taxpayer dollars that I don't want to lose as well. One of the things I mentioned before, and we have the privilege of having our Norman School Board President with us in the audience, is partnering with the school district on some of these projects to see what we can do to help them and help us and kind of create more of a working relationship there. But as much as I am for an advocate for the parks programs, I just see, for me, it's hard to justify spending that money on a marshland. It's like looking at the underground tunnels, the under-the-river tunnels in Pittsburgh. It's like, you know, there's $200 million. You spend it or lose it. But that's just my thoughts. I mean, I want to see the parks programs develop and grow, but I think as the board, we have to talk and say, hey, what parks are actually getting used, and what do we have to do to either modernize all of them or start to consolidate?
Just if I can clarify just one issue. This is a Fee and Lou that is charged on the developers when they sell the lot. This isn't a taxpayer. This isn't, you know, an assessment on taxpayers.
I think I would kind of agree with what you're saying a little bit, but with being the Fee and Lou money, and I'm sure Mr. Miller and everyone got their heads together. I believe walking trails on all the studies we've done in the past have been one of the top priority items that residents want. So, I mean, for a park that maybe doesn't get a lot of use, maybe a walking trail actually brings a little bit more attention to that park and gets residents to use it a little bit more.
And lastly, an update on the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Bank loan, the PIB loan that we were, that I was authorized to apply for, for the Haywood landslide development. And whenever this was done, we toured the flood plain and the slide areas with state officials, PennDOT, Pima, and they said that because of the rain, the excessive rain, this would qualify for emergency loan proceeds, which are at 0%. So, the board approved that. This is a $650,000 loan. I applied for the loan under the emergency with that in the narrative, met with PennDOT officials. This was applying emergency loan, 0%, boom. In October, after we got a bid, we ordered the bid, put the loan application in, didn't hear anything for December, January, February, March, emailing back and forth, you know, can I get an update on the loan, updated on the loan. Finally, in April, I did contact Senator Ward's office as she was the chair of the Transportation Committee. Can she maybe put a tickler in? And then, all of a sudden, at the end of May, or actually early May, I got the loan documents at 2.65%. I called, you know, again, well, didn't get any information. They said, well, they really didn't declare a disaster, so we couldn't give you the emergency funds. This wasn't, you know, in our discussions, even when we were with Pima and PennDOT, they knew there was never going to be a disaster declaration. So, they said, that's why the emergency funds are going to go. This isn't FEMA funds. This is state funds giving it to get these emergency repairs. So, with this, this would put the project at roughly another $97,000 cost over the 10-year life of the loan. We built this, we built the road because we couldn't wait for the loan, so we paid the loan with, we paid for the project. The project came in about $435,000, or $635,000. It's been paid. What I'm suggesting to the board, that we do not enter, accept this loan at the interest rate, because if we wanted financing, I could have went out and we probably could have, you know, secured a better rate than 2.65% from one of our local banks for this project. And this was basically, you know, PennDOT basically turned a blind eye to what they said in the field. Couple months later, you know, I don't know, some staff changed, but all of a sudden, now the rules change. And I really don't want to take liquid fuels fund and spend, take $100,000 off of our road program to put back, to put into a project that's already completed.
Discussion?
Jeff, you said that you could have got something from a local bank. What's the percentage rates at the local banks?
I can't tell you that offhand, but I could probably, because what you do is you kind of negotiate the tax rate. I might have been able to get less than 2.65%, but we don't know. I mean, that was a, you know, I've got them anywhere from 2%, you know, up through 3%, because the interest rates are still relatively low on the lending side. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Manager Silken. Planning and engineering topics, Mr. Blenko.
There are four items from the Planning Commission on the agenda tonight. The first one is Site Plan 2, 2019, the cellular antenna site plan on Oakside Drive, which we discussed at the conditional use hearing. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this with the condition that the Conservation District approve the erosion control plan for the site, which is pending. Bruce gave me very specific language, which I think you were in agreement with, that no permits would be issued until the variance is settled by the courts. Understand that at the time, the Planning Commission made their recommendation, it was subject to the variances being approved, which wouldn't happen until the prior day. So, now that's... So now that's happened, now it's been appealed, multiple things have developed since their approval. But I will prepare a resolution with those two conditions for your consideration for next week.
Just let me wade in now a little bit. This was very peculiar, the way this developed procedurally for purposes of the legal process. Ordinarily, in the ordinary course of events, this board would not be hearing a conditional use application until the zoning hearing board would have acted on the variance. So we would have said to the applicant, "You can't come before the board on conditional use until you've gotten your approval from the zoning hearing board." In this case, the zoning hearing board granted it, and we believe erroneously granted it because if you read the statutory appeal, we don't believe there's a hardship that befalls the property. In other words, there's nothing unique about the circumstances of the property that makes this variance one that has merit. And I'll just kind of indicate, the argument that will be made in front of the judges, they want to increase their circulation, their coverage. Well, that's because they want to make more money. That's not a rationale under zoning to get a variance. It's a rationale for business, but it's not a rationale where a court should grant a variance because of the peculiarities of the land. In fact, there's coverage now, it's just not as good, and that, I think, hurts their case. So saying all of that, the fact remains is when a zoning ordinance, or when a variance is granted by the zoning hearing board, there is no stay by the facts once an appeal is taken to the court. So that means that they could go ahead and build the tower at their own risk. And that's why I stated to them at the beginning that they're acting at their own risk. I fashioned a condition that kind of puts the kibosh on any further development on this unless and until there's a variance granted by the court. And I don't believe that's going to happen. So if I'm correct, then what will happen is this conditional use that you have will literally become annuity because they can't get, they don't get the variance. The variance should have, did in fact come first. The unusual part about it is you're taking an appeal from it. And the other unusual part of it is there's no stay, so we have to act on it. And it's separate and distinct in some sense from the conditional use application. We've tied it together by virtue of the condition. So the applicant can't move forward unless and until there is a decision made by the court, and there could be an appeal from that. I mean, this process, if you've seen it a little bit, it could take more than a year to have itself filter through the court system. The appeal is filed, it's timely filed, and now we'll wait to get a briefing schedule or a status conference with the court. That could take months. So in the meantime, they're going to be saddled with that condition and Andy's not going to issue any permits until such time as the court has ruled on the variance, which is really kind of like a conditioned precedent. You should have that decided before you come in. I'm frankly a little bit surprised that they didn't ask for a continuance pending the variance being decided. Any questions about the process? Okay.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay, next item is Site Plan 14 of 2018. And this is the Westmoreland County Transit Authority Park and Ride Lot at Route 30 and Carpenter Lane. You may recall, this was an emergency move that was necessitated by the redevelopment of the shopping center on Route 30. They had to vacate, they had to find a place to park as many cars as they could, and quickly. There was a vacant lot there that had been Charlie Jay's and then the Tomato Patch Restaurant. So they quickly scrambled to get some signs up and designate that as a park and ride lot. They had committed at the time that at some point they would come in and bring it up to standards with paving and markings and lighting and landscaping and bus shelters. I guess the Transit Authority has some grant money that they got for this, which has made it affordable. So they are proposing to redo that parking lot with concrete pavement for the bus travel paths, asphalt pavement for the parking, stormwater management to handle the runoff from all of that landscaping and bus shelters. It will increase the capacity from around 250 cars, bump it up by about 30% to 329 vehicles. They will have oversized spaces for larger vehicles or pickup trucks, and they're asking for a slightly reduced aisle width and parking size for just regular vehicles, regular cars. The rationale, which I think is sound, is that this is not a space that's going to turn over 10, 12, 15 times a day. A car will pull in in the morning, it will be there all day long, and it will stay there until its owner comes back in the evening. So they have asked for a waiver on landscaping adjacent to the Sheetz parking lot because it just goes concrete to concrete. They're asking for a waiver on the parking space size and aisle width striping and details. Our stormwater management ordinance includes a provision that infiltration will not be used as a method to handle runoff from commercial parking lots. And I can only surmise that the thinking was that commercial parking lots may have antifreeze, oil, grease, metals, and we didn't want to put that into the groundwater. In fact, DEP has flipped on that, that's now their preferred method. They require that you infiltrate at least the two-year frequency storm. So at some point, we need to update our stormwater ordinance to get that out, although a county-wide ordinance has been promised for about six months here. So the Planning Commission thought all of those waivers made sense. They recommended approval at their June meeting contingent upon approval by the Conservation District and DEP of the Erosion Control and Stormwater Plans. PennDOT approval of highway occupancy permits, and there will be two. One issued to the Transit Authority for their driveway entrance from 30, one issued to the township for the storm sewer connection from their overflow from their detention system. Addressing any remaining review comments set forth in KU Resources 52819 review letter. That's all, just some things that we're missing from the plans, and I expect that very shortly. And then finally, the Transit Authority will enter into a stormwater O&amp;M agreement with the township as required by our stormwater ordinance. That's an aerial photo of what the lot looks like now. That'll be much better defined, although really it's doing pretty well considering its gravel. Can I answer any questions? Okay. Alright, the next item is Subdivision 7 of 2019, the Mountain Ridge Estates Revision Number 6 on Forest Oaks Trail. And that is just a revision of lot lines between two adjacent properties. It makes one a little wider, makes one a little narrower to accommodate larger building footprints. Planning Commission recommends approval of that with new conditions. And the final one is Weber Estates Revision Number 2. And this is also a boundary line revision between two adjacent lots on Weber Court.
Alright, thanks, Andy. Any questions for Mr. Blenko? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no old business on the agenda, any further board comments tonight? No, I just need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All is in favor by stating a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meaning adjourned. Motion passes 6 to 0, meaning adjourned at 7:52.